Welcome, everybody. Welcome back, I should say. It's ten thirty one today. Is Tuesday. I'm sorry, Friday, May twenty third. It's a long week. Okay, welcome, everybody, to the meeting of the Board of Supervisors for Central Florida Tourism Oversight District. General Counsel, we have a quorum, and were we properly noticed? Thank you, sir. Do we have any public speakers? I'm skipping over a couple of things here, I know.
I don't think we have any public speakers.
We're gonna move to Chaplain Rick Spence to open the meeting with an invocation. Is Chaplain Spence here? Good morning, sir. How are you?
All right. I wanna thank Stephanie and the board for allowing me to do this. This is a... So, this is an opportunity and privilege for me that I never take for granted, and I appreciate being able to be here this morning. One of the things I wanted to mention this morning, back years ago when I was a student at UCF, one of the classes that I took was an English literature class. And the reason I signed up for that is because I knew there were a bunch of football and basketball players in there, which meant it was probably an easy class. And sure enough, it was. We basically critiqued Old English plays. And one of the plays that we critiqued was this one called Macbeth that William Shakespeare wrote. And one of the lines, one of the characters in there says to the witches, it says, "If you could see into the seeds of time, to say which grain will grow and which grain will not." He's asking the witches to tell him what his future is gonna be and what the prognosis of his life is gonna be. And I, I, that's about the only thing that stands out in that class to me. I'm not as cultured and buttoned up as what you may think I am, but I think about that a lot when I think about my time in the fire service here at Reedy Creek. That thirty-six, thirty-seven years ago, when I started the Fire Academy, if I could fast forward and see how my career would play out and how it would affect me and the people around me, would I still make that choice again today? We ran thousands, thousands of calls. And those calls took a physical toll on my body. I've had three surgeries and six other procedures done on my body in that timeframe. The emotional and mental toll that those calls took on me by not having some of the outcomes that we had hoped for, the thousands of hours that I spent in classrooms and in training sessions, trying to remain effective at this job. If I had known all this stuff going in to the Fire Academy, would I have still gone and would I have still made this choice? I'd say, heck, yeah, I'd have done it again, and I'd done it a thousand times over because I loved the job. And yet, they were tough times, but as Robert Schuler says, tough times don't last, tough people do. I would have done it again because I would have missed out on these relationships that started out as colleagues and coworkers and involved, evolved into brothers and sisters off the job. I'd have missed that strong bond and these friendships that extend over time. There are several of those relationships that are here in this room today. I'd have missed out on some of the things that we did that changed and altered people's lives and the outcome of their lives, and they affected the people. When we had a save, it not only impacted the person that we had a save on, it impacted everybody and their family. I would have missed out on that. There are so many things that I would have missed out on had I chosen another profession, and I never would have considered not doing this again. You know, Shakespeare kind of put it one way, but the prophet Jeremiah, I think, said it a lot better than what William Shakespeare said. And this is a different translation than what some of you may have heard. It's called the Good News Translation, which is a normal conversation translation. Jeremiah says, God speaking, "I alone know the plans that I have for you, plans to bring you peace, to bring you goodness and prosperity, not disaster and not evil, plans to bring about the future that you hope for." I think that sums it up pretty good. Let me pray. Most gracious heavenly Father, we come to you right now. We're so thankful to be here this morning. We're thankful for these men and women that have taken the time to come from many far distances away to be here, to just take part in governing this area out here and the district and just improving everything about it and making it better for all those who come here. We pray that you'll give them wisdom and insight into the decisions that they need to make. Just give them guidance during this process. And we just pray that your spirit, your presence will walk beside them, not just through this meeting, but as they leave here, go back to their jobs and go back to their homes. We just pray that your presence will still stand strong over them. We ask that you'll be with the men and women that are on the job, that are serving this community, and continue to bless them and keep them safe during their efforts, and just be with the men and women of our armed forces and keep them out of harm's way. Thank you once again for this opportunity to assemble like this, in Jesus' name. Amen.
Thank you, Chaplain Spence, for your service. You've made a very positive impact on innumerable people. We appreciate you and thank you for your time today. Chief Ferrari, would you lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, no public comments, Mr. Payne?
I know there are no public comments.
We are moving on to the Consent Agenda, item five. I trust the boards had the time to review the four items on the consent agenda. Everybody has seen that. Do we have Supervisor Ziegler on the line, too? I just want to confirm that.
She is not able to be on this.
Not online. Okay, thank you. All right, is anybody want to remove any item off of the consent agenda? Seeing none, is there a motion to approve the consent agenda?
So moved.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? All right, management reports. District Administrator Capeluce, good morning.
Good morning. Happy Friday.
Happy Friday, or Tuesday. Nobody wants to rewind the week with me.
I mean, I would love an extra day, but I'm not gonna go back to Tuesday. Just wanna start, Catherine's still here, and just, the comp plan is a tremendous feat. And Lee, Catherine, Eric, make it look like it's no big deal, and I'm just grateful for their work and getting that done and really their coordination, too, with the cities and making sure everybody's up to speed. So grateful for that. So Catherine, thank you and your team again. Very important. This week is EMS week. It's really an opportunity to thank our team for the week, and it's something we should do every day, not just this week, but I applaud our team for going out, getting in the field. The chief, deputy chiefs have delivered cakes, gone to the stations, just, just, just to say thank you. Thank you for what they do every day. Rick hit it on the nose. They, they go to some, some interesting calls, and they go to some pretty horrific calls. And we are grateful for the work they do and, and what they do every day, and they do it with a smile on their face. On that note, I think the chief alerted me last weekend. We were at calls coming in that were back to midsummer calls, like busiest time calls. I think you're seeing the heat is been higher than normal for this time of year, so we expect a pretty busy weekend. So I think we're gonna see more to come on that. An update on some of the, the work Craig and his team are doing on the mill and resurfacing and Catherine's team. Sorry, not Craig's team necessarily, Catherine's team as well. But we've started the mill and resurfacing on Osceola Parkway. That's underway, started May eleventh. It'll be done in July, and then we'll start on Road Drive North. That'll start on June first, so we're getting those projects done, hopefully, very quickly. We're also doing the permitting phase for the garage lighting projects. That's one of the bigger projects, safety projects, that we're doing with the garages. So that's on track now. Susan, thank you for your patience with all of us as we do our budgets. We're getting those in place. July, y'all will vote to set a tentative millage. I call that, and I always get in trouble for calling it this, but we call it the maximum millage. You never wanna go above what you set, or we have to send announcements out to every one of our taxpayers to tell them what, what we're planning. So we like to leave that up to the county since they do a great job of it for all of us. But we're working hard on getting that. We had some meetings with one of our taxpayers yesterday that just talked about some of the development that's coming. And it's clear our team is gonna be extremely busy in the next five years. So we are going to get that in shape to make a recommendation to y'all in July. Hurricane season, Tanya, I think everybody got their plans in, so we are ready. If we're ready, that means nothing's gonna happen. So that's what we're planning. And I think that is all.
Okay. Any questions for Stephanie? Okay, thank you so much. Appreciate it. We're gonna move on to item seven point one. Our CFO is gonna present a budget amendment. Good morning, Susan. How are you?
Good morning. All right, just put my schedule up. I'll explain it. We have a budget amendment for our current year, fiscal year twenty-five, and this budget amendment is contained within the general fund. We're not crossing funds. And I did not number it number one. This is the first one of the year. So we need an additional budgeted amount for expenditures for repairs of our Structure 405. We need four hundred and eighty thousand dollars. And our water structure does qualify for reimbursement from our Drainage Reserve Fund. Our latest balance in our Drainage Reserve Fund was around seven point four million dollars, so we have plenty to cover this additional four hundred and eighty thousand. So what you're seeing is an increase to our expenditures of four hundred and eighty thousand and then an increase in our transfer in to cover this additional funding from our Drainage Reserve Funds.
Any questions? Okay. Do we have a motion to approve item seven point one?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any discussion, sorry. All in favor? Aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, thank you so much.
Thank you.
All right, we're moving on to item seven point two. A motion to, do we have a motion to approve an award of a contract to Carr &amp; Collier Inc. for water control structures and repairs?
Good morning, Chair Yarborough.
Hold on, let me just get a motion, move a motion. Second? Okay, all right, Mr. Sand. Good morning. How are you? Go ahead, tell us what we're voting on.
Good morning, everybody. This project is the S-405 Water Control Structure. It is the largest of the District Seventeen Animal Gate Control Structures located on property. The structure dates back to the late nineteen sixties. It received significant damage during Hurricane Ian, therefore necessitating the need to repair and replacement of the structure itself. The structure is located on Bear Island, Bear Island Road. On March seventh, our procurement team put it out to bid. There was three bidders that proposed on the job on the project. Carr &amp; Collier Incorporated was the lowest responsive bidder. This project funding, which Susan stated previously, is derived from the Drainage Reserve Funds through the Planning Engineering Planned Work Budget. Any questions?
Any questions? All right, any discussion? All in favor? Aye? Any opposed? All right, thank you so much.
Thank you.
Are you still standing for the next one? I don't remember.
Nope.
Okay, well, thank you so much, Mr. Sand. Appreciate it. We're moving on to item seven point three. We have a motion to approve an award of a three-year continuing service contract to three firms authorizing the District Administrator to execute contracts for district-wide natural gas underground construction services in an amount not to exceed two point seven million.
So moved.
Second? All right, Mr. Casper, what are we talking about here?
Good morning. My name is Anthony Casper. I lead the Engineering Programs Team for Reedy Creek Energy Services. So this is actually the first of a few items I have for you today. This is for the three-year continuing services contract for natural gas underground construction services. The vendors awarded these contracts and will provide services on an as-needed and emergency basis. Work will be managed through the issuance of task work orders and distributed across the three vendors. The total authorization is not to exceed two point seven million dollars and is anticipated to be equally allocated across the three-year term. And each task work order will be individually subject to budgetary approvals.
Any questions for Mr. Casper? Discussion? All in favor? Aye? Any opposed? All right, thank you. Item seven point four, are you still up there, Mr. Casper?
I am.
You wanna tell us, first of all, do we have a motion to approve item seven point four? Second? All right, Mr. Casper.
The next item I have is for Lift Station Number Seven Rehabilitation and Upgrade Improvements. Lift Station Number Seven is located across from the Contemporary Resort, adjacent to the Magic Kingdom Bus Loop. Originally constructed in the late nineteen sixties, the most recent rehabilitation and upgrade of the station was completed in nineteen ninety-three. The current project is to provide a full rehabilitation of the station, including refurbishment or replacement of all civil, mechanical, and electrical components. The board had previously approved engineering and design support services for this project. A complete design was advertised as a competitive bid, and two responses were received, with TLC Diversified being identified as the lowest bid. Utilities Division is seeking authorization to establish an overall budget of eleven point one million dollars. Award the contract to TLC Diversified for eight million nine hundred and forty-nine thousand dollars, plus a ten percent allowance for contingency, and approve an additional allowance for RCES Design Support Services during the construction phase not to exceed seven hundred and fifty thousand.
Any questions or discussion?
I just had one question I have here. Has the district contracted with TLC Diversified before, and if so, do we have any experience or?
Utility Division has not had any recent contracts with them. I did have contracts with them in prior life and a lot of success with them over on the West Coast.
Okay, thank you.
And along those lines, do we keep records? I mean, do you have a, what's the word I'm looking for? It's escaping me, but are you, when we have a vendor, do you keep track of their performance and do you record that in any way?
Don't have a formal recording process. That is something that we had discussed with Tiffany, but it's, it's one of the aspirational goals we're working towards.
Okay, got it. All right, any other questions? All in favor? Aye? Any opposed? All right, thank you. Item seven point five, is there a motion to approve item seven point five? Second? Mr. Casper?
Next item is for Project S Electric Service. This is a project in response to utility service requests that originated back in May of two thousand twenty-three. After partnering with a customer on some revisions and updates, the district ultimately responded in May of two thousand twenty-four with details for each utility service requested regarding ability to provide service, conditions for service, and requirements for any financial contributions. To provide the requested electric utility service, extensions are needed to the district facilities, including installation of new underground electric distribution infrastructure and modifications to the existing medium voltage system in the area. The board had previously approved engineering design and support services for the project. After completing the design, a proposal was obtained from Maddox Electric Company to provide construction services as a task work under, under their existing continuing services agreement. Maddox is also serving as the electrical subcontractor on the, for the customer, so in terms of coordinating contractors, that's why they were selected for this work. The Utilities Division is seeking authorization to establish an overall project budget of two million nine hundred and fifty thousand dollars to issue a task work order to Maddox Electric for one million one hundred and eighty-four, three hundred and eighty-two dollars, very exact, plus a ten percent allowance for contingency, and approve an additional allowance for RCES Design Support Services during the construction phase not to exceed three hundred and fifty thousand.
Any questions or discussion on item seven point five? Seeing none, all in favor? Aye? Any opposed? All right, item seven point six, do we have a motion to approve item seven point six? Second? Mr. Casper, is this you again?
Yes, it is.
Go ahead. You have the floor.
Some people get to draw the straw all the time.
You've gotten very fortunate. I mean, what, two questions? That's not bad.
So y'all are letting me down here.
Thank you for saving a malt to the last one.
Okay, if you want, we can make seven point six really exciting.
Oh, great.
I mean, we're gonna think of a lot of questions. Go ahead.
This was the one written by Chris, so. All right, the last item I have is the Utility Division Capital Program Funding Request. As you know, the district funds infrastructure projects for utility systems through a variety of funding sources, including utility revenue bonds. And the district has maintained an overall strong credit rating from major agencies as part of this practice. Since two thousand fifteen, the district has obtained more than a hundred and eighty-six million dollars in bond proceeds, facilitating fifty-seven projects that are now either completed or in progress. Out of that a hundred and eighty-six million dollars, there's still approximately thirty-eight million dollars remaining in unspent proceeds. However, those are projected to be fully committed by the end of the calendar year. And actually, fourteen million dollars of that was just committed in the last five minutes. The current request is for a hundred and seventy-five million dollars to be used to support an additional twenty-two infrastructure projects across five of the district's utility systems. The funding is proposed to be split equally between taxable and tax-exempt bonds for projects on either traditional or non-traditional utility systems. And with your approval, the finance team will begin exploring options that will be presented to the board at a future meeting for review and deliberations. And on the presentation is the tentative calendar of next steps.
Okay. I just have a question for my colleagues, actually, to make sure everybody's had the opportunity to talk to our team about what the projects are that are going into this. Everybody feels comfortable. Since we don't get to talk.
It's a long list.
Yeah, making sure, making sure everybody has had the opportunity before voting on it. Any questions or discussion on this item? None? Okay. You're getting a really easy run, Mr. Casper. All right, all in favor? Aye?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Yes, she is.
All right, seeing none. We are now moving on to item seven point six.
Thank you.
So you're finished now. Thank you.
I am, yeah.
All right. Item seven point six. Thank you so much. Seriously. This is a motion to award, do we have a motion to award a three-year continuing service contract to seven firms for district-wide general engineering consulting services and offer as a district administrator to execute the contracts for a maximum expenditure cap of eight million thirty-seven thousand?
So moved.
Second? All right, Ms. Ledso?
Good morning. So as mentioned, this is a request for continuing service contracts for general engineering services. Planning engineering as part of our role in maintaining the district's roads, bridges, and water control system rely on general engineering consultants to help support staff, bring additional technical expertise, and they perform a wide range of services from independent small studies to safety analysis to emergency response to doing small-scale repair packages. Overall, these are small tasks that are not well-suited to go out as an independent design package. In January of this year, we put out a letter of interest, and we had an outstanding response with sixteen responses. We, our selection committee evaluated and reviewed those responses, and we are recommending an award of seven firms that score to score of ninety or higher. While planning engineering will be the primary user of this contract, it does allow for other departments and divisions to plug into this as well. And looking at the total estimated budgetary allotments, we are requesting that we have a three-year expenditure cap for eight million thirty-seven thousand and two hundred and fifty dollars across the three-year term. And as a reminder, all the future task work orders, they will comply with CCNA requirements as well as budgetary allowances.
Okay, thank you. Any questions or discussion? All in favor? Aye? Any opposed? Thank you, Ms. Ledso. Appreciate it. Item seven point eight, do we have a motion to approve equipment lease purchase agreement with Motorola Solutions? Second? All right, is this Mr. Edwards or Fire Marshall? Nope, Chief Ferrari.
Correct. I am not Chief Edwards. He is a little under the weather today and asked me to stand in on his behalf.
Okay.
Good morning, Chair Yarborough and members of the board. We're here today to talk about public safety portable radio replacement, and I actually just wanna put this up there so you can see what we're talking about. So the scope of this project is to replace these portable radios that we carry on our hips as first responders. These are used to communicate between units and also back to our dispatch center and also to mutual aid agencies while we're on emergency and non-emergency incidents. It's, it's our lifeline. It's one of our critical pieces of equipment that all of our personnel carry when we're in the field. And this project will involve replacing a hundred and twenty-five of our frontline portables, and we've selected the Motorola Apex Next Radio, which is the latest and greatest in technology for, for wireless communication for us. This, this transition to this device will support the modern technology and features that include on-screen mapping and integration back to our nine-one-one center with personnel tracking right down to the person, and also improved firefighter life safety features such as improved person-down alert. So firefighter were to go down, the radio can automatically alert. And then one of the latest features to integrate into these radios is seamless switching with cellular carriers. So when, right now, we're on our private radio system, with a district-owned radio system, if that were to have problems with coverage or have problems, it can switch to a cellular backhaul and get the signal back to the communication center as a backup. So you're really never at a coverage area, which is critical, especially in times of emergency. You could, it could be with a patient, it could be something going wrong, and you need to push this button and it needs to work. And that's another layer of redundancy built into the portable. So the funding here, it's included in the district's annual budget as a capital item in a portable radio replacement project four thirty. It includes a value-added promotional credit of one hundred thousand and five dollars, and it will be financed over a three-year term with a down payment of five hundred and twenty-four thousand six hundred and eighty-two dollars, less the value-added promotion, and then year one cost four hundred and eighty thousand three hundred and eighty-one, year two, four hundred and eighty thousand three hundred and eighty-one, and, and there you have the total. So we're asking for your approval to purchase the hundred and twenty-five frontline portables.
Any questions or discussion?
Madam Chair, since Motorola was kind enough to send some folks here, I wanna make sure your trip was validated by asking at least one question. So Chief, I, I know that we've spent a lot of resources on modernizing nine-one-one center and our ability to communicate seamlessly, and I've asked this question before, but this particular addition, does it, does it seamlessly communicate with our partners in Osceola County, Orange County? If you're on, you know, a joint scene, and, and how does that work with these devices?
Correct. Yes, we have the infrastructure to support that, and this device will continue to do that. Our, our systems in the area and the central Florida region are conjoined through an agreement, so we're able to roam onto each other's system, much like if you have AT&amp;T and roam onto T-Mobile. We have that same, same setup. The, the robust features in the portable are really something, a big leap for us. With the apparatus we've been purchasing lately and the investments in nine-one-one and across the department, this is just another step in firefighter and EMS safety for us, for our personnel, and with the features that we're purchasing.
Great. And then the issue regarding routing with high-rises or these structures that are like really unique structures that are gonna be difficult to communicate through, how does that work with us? I mean, do we have those mobile devices or these buildings all equipped with their own towers, or how do we do that?
That's a great question. So there's, there's code in NFPA one and one-on-one that now requires structures to have in-building communication signal for public safety personnel. We have to deliver a certain amount of signal to the front door, and then if you can't, we can't penetrate the building through building design, the building owner has to put in what they call bi-directional amplification system to boost our signal inside. Many of our structures across property, high-rises, attractions, those can present challenges, and I'm happy to say that just about all of those structures have in-building capability. But with this new portable radio, we're going, where we get into an area where we aren't able to get signal in, in, in a part of a building, we're gonna be able to switch to cellular, and then if the cellular doesn't work, we're going to be able to switch to building Wi-Fi. And so all of these layers of redundancy ensure that when I'm on scene and my personnel are on scene and we push this button, someone's gonna hear us.
Excellent. Thank you. Mr. Casper, you got off easy.
You're welcome. Sure.
The finance charge, what was the rate on that?
Oh, where's Tiffany? I.
Five percent?
Four.
Okay. Four point nine. It was low, but I'd wanted to make sure it was pretty reasonable. It's a pretty big purchase.
Any other questions or discussion? All right, all in favor? Aye? Any opposed? Thank you, Chief Ferrari. Appreciate it. We've had a lot of substitutes today stepping in for the folks. Go ahead.
Some of it's part of a trading program and others, we have. Some of it's part of a trading program and others, we have ten-year frontline for emergency service personnel like firefighters, paramedics, but we have other divisions that we support throughout the department, like our fire inspectors and parking garage operations that we can also allocate that portable radio down to them because, you know, they're not as reliant on pushing it and making sure it works as a fire inspector. That's really meant for our in-the-field first responders, so those two applications will be utilized. Yes, correct.
Thanks Chief Ferrari, appreciate it. Alright, we're moving on to item eight point one, attorney-client executive closed session. Mr. Payne?
Yes Chair, I'd like to advise the board that I am requesting advice concerning litigation known as Tracy Schray, S-C-H-R-E-Y versus the Reedy Creek Improvement District, which it was, that's what we were called when the case was filed. And just pursuant to statute, I have to make this request at the public meeting.
Okay. Upon our general counsel's request, in accordance with section two eighty-six eleven eight, the Florida statutes, I'm now to announce commencement of a private attorney-client executive closed session regarding Tracy Schray versus Reedy Creek Improvement District, case number two zero one eight, CA zero zero seven three six five, Orange County Circuit Court. The date is May twenty-third, twenty twenty-five, the time is eleven AM. The attorney-client session has been properly advertised and will be attended by the Board of Supervisors members Alexis Sharber, Brian Ongst, John Gilbert, and Scott Workman, District Administrator Stephanie Kapalusis, District General Counsel Roy Payne, District Outside Counsel Kevin Shaughnessy, and a court reporter. The estimated length of the session is thirty minutes. I will now adjourn the public meeting and order to conduct the closed session. The board members, the district administrator, the referenced attorneys, and the court reporter will proceed to the green conference room located in the back for a closed session. I'm going to ask the board clerk to remain in this room until after the closed session. We will return here to terminate the closed session in an open meeting and adjourn at that time. Everyone else is welcome to stay here as well, but not commanded to, only the clerk. Alright. Alright, it is eleven thirty, hold on. Eleven thirty-six AM. On my phone, we have a couple of different clocks in the room, so on my phone, eleven thirty-six AM, we are back in our open session. Is there any further business at the board? Any comments? Seeing none, we will adjourn for the day. Thank you so much, everybody. Oh, I missed something, go ahead. Where? Sorry, let me get to my language here. Alright. Yeah, I thought I just did that, but okay, I'll read it. I'd like to reconvene the public meeting and announce the termination of the attorney-client session. Okay, we are done, and the time is eleven thirty-seven AM now. Is there any further business at the board? Seeing none, we will adjourn. Thank you.